I'd like to welcome everybody to the City of Leavenworth Study Session Tuesday, January 21, 2020. And please turn off or silence all cell phones during the study session. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube. We have three topics that we are going to cover tonight in the study session. And the first one is stubby park sign usage policy.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, just recently, the stubby park electronic messaging board sign was completed. Staff continues to work on things such as the lighting, the contrast of colors. We've made some modifications to the nighttime hours. What doesn't work well as far as background colors, some of it's too bright. So we've been, we've been working with the developer on that. And those are, those are tweaks we'll be making as we learn more about the sign. The next thing we turn our attention to is how do we use the sign to its fullest capacity? The intent of the sign was to share information with the community about what's going on, not just with the city, but within the city. So as government likes to do, we decided to create a policy. A policy is good for us, it's good for the commission, it's good for the public to all be on the same page with what the purpose of the sign is and authorized use of the sign. So we created what is an administrative policy. It's not a policy that will be adopted by the commission, but an administrative policy that we wanted to share with you and share with the public. Certainly will be on the city's website. Some of the verbiage was taken from the old Cable Channel 2 Advisory Board language, which had authorized users in some policies for guidelines. So just briefly, I'm going to go over some of the, the highlights of the policy and then just look for any feedback from the commission. And then, as, as I mentioned, this won't be voted on by the commission, it'll just be an administrative document that we keep within the city. So the, this publishing on the sign should be limited to city-sponsored events such as parades, conferences, festivals, or ceremonies. That, that's pretty self-explanatory. Anything the city puts on, either as the lead agency, or a lot of times we partner on events with other organizations within the city or the county. Various announcements and notices of services and programs administered by the city, this would be basketball sign-ups, this would be plays at the River, at the Performing Arts Center. Services and programs that the city either directly or through indirectly sponsors or is a part of. Emergency information, no emergency declarations, anything that the police or fire department felt was necessary, impertinent information for the public would certainly go on those. Then, item D, the most, sort of the catch-all is, in this language really does come from the Channel 2 policy that we had. Other governmental agencies, nonprofits, or city-sponsored organizations to promote open public events deemed by the city to serve a general community purpose. The sign does not advertise nor promote business-related information or information related to events that are private in nature. These have to be, they can be pay events, but they have to be open in nature. If it's a, limited to the membership of a certain group, then that's, that, an event like that would not necessarily be appropriate. It wouldn't be an open public event. Determination of the eligibility and content, sole discretion of the Parks and Recreation Director and ultimately the city manager. Determination based primarily on the extent of the information is directly or substantially related to the interests of the residents of the City of Leavenworth. Information important to our public. Entities eligible for submitting information by application include, but are not limited to ones that you would expect to see, the Leavenworth Public Library, the Leavenworth Historic Society, the Leavenworth Farmers Market, Main Street, Leavenworth Lansing Chamber of Commerce, the Leavenworth and Lansing Boards of Education. If you're wondering why Lansing's on there, part of our city is in the Lansing School District. So a lot of our residents attend school in the Lansing School District. So I think that's important. Leavenworth County Port Authority, Leavenworth County Development Corporation, Leavenworth County Board of County Commissioners, State of Kansas. That is not by any means an exhaustive list, but it gives you the idea. Nonprofit groups, other governmental partners that we would put on there. Staff is going to create a, I already have just a one-page document that you submit with, just like we do for a parade application now. What's your event? What information do you want listed? When do you want it to start? And when do you want it to stop? So we can make sure we don't have outdated and old information on there. So I don't foresee any, any issues with this. I know it sounds like a lot to put into this, but we try, do we try to keep it simple? It's one-page, it's pretty self-explanatory. We will learn as we do this. This is the first time we've had something like this. I know Fort Leavenworth, I've spoken to them, they have a couple of different boards. There's different rules for different, the different boards, different agencies within the fort control the different boards. So this will sort of evolve as we go through this.
Well, you can see what the banks put out and others put out as well. They kind of put community events and things like that up too.
Right. Yep. But nothing that we would, there's no charge, there's no fee or anything associated with this, because there's no labor. We used to charge for the sign that went over Fourth Street, the banner sign, but that was primarily labor and application fee. But no, no fees or anything like this. The intent is community information that's helpful for our residents and our visitors. Of course, we'll put events, Camp Leavenworth and those types of events.
Is there, is there a limit to, at least at each time period, what you put on there? So it's not really just like overloaded with?
Um, our, that's a good question.
Because you drive around the block, or you know, you're like, okay, I just missed something else. And there's like many things on there.
It's a good question that, if we start getting to that point where we do have 20 on at a time, we may set a maximum.
Yeah.
So that it doesn't cycle. But they do cycle pretty quickly.
Okay.
So, you know, our intent at first is not to limit it, to see, see how it goes and use it as much as we can.
Well, you're putting a date on there, so when you want to have it on there. So if it's like within a week, a week or two week or whatever, like we used to do with the banners, then, then they would come and go.
So is it a week?
I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal.
Just say, there's a community event, are we going to advertise it like in a week in advance or two weeks in advance?
Well, a lot of times ticket sales are well before that.
Yeah.
So we'll leave it up to the organization, you know, with discretion. You know, hopefully, I don't want to create sort of a hard, fast timeline for everything.
Right.
But yeah, try to make a reasonable, reasonable decision.
Try it out and see, yeah.
Would the father, daughter tea that's coming up in a couple weeks, would that be something appropriate?
Absolutely. And it's already on there, yeah. Sure.
Where is the keyboard?
So there is no keyboard.
Just a second, I can't hear.
There is no keyboard. It's a, it's a mobile app, it's accessible anywhere that you have internet service.
So who has?
Steve Grant has it on his phone. Primarily, it's Wendy Hall and the Parks and Recreation Department that will handle all of that stuff.
So there's no keyboard, he can, he could, if the police chief calls him on an emergency, he could change it immediately.
From his couch, yeah.
Oh, good. Good. I think it's nice. Good idea.
Is that an app that was specifically created for the City of Leavenworth or just something?
Just an app that they had as part of the software that runs the board.
Okay.
So you could put weather advisories up there at the last minute?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good question. Any other discussion or comments on this particular agenda item?
I think it's great.
Looks good now. It looks great.
Please let us know if, you know, you think it's, we, we, the biggest adjustment we made is we made it 50% less bright from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Those nighttime hours, it was really overwhelming.
I saw some feedback on Facebook the first couple.
And those changes can also be made through the app. So we can, that can be adjusted.
Okay.
And it's on a timer, you have a day settings and night settings, and it just automatically goes to those different settings. So it has a lot of functionality that I think will be helpful.
Good. We've run down. Any other thing, any other?
No, we'll post this on the website, and we'll post the, what's required to get your event on there, who you contact, and what information's required. And we'll get that going so we can start getting some community events on there.
Thank you. Next topic is review Black and Beach Study of Flooding Issues, Randolph Street within the city.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm going to turn this over to our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald. As everybody is aware, the city initiated in 2019 a stormwater, a dedicated stormwater fee for our failing infrastructure within the city. As part of that, we've undertaken a number of studies. A lot of these issues we're aware of, but studies cost money. And we didn't have a dedicated funding stream to get into studying, you know, the ins and outs of the problems a lot of the times. This was an issue that was brought to us that we were aware of, and we recently hired Black and Beach to complete sort of a study and assessment of the program. And I'm going to have Mike McDonald present that, that study.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we do have the final report from Black and Beach reviewing the flooding issues surrounding the 1,000 block of Randolph. This is an area that has experienced flooding of the, I believe it's been church in every case, and I believe that it's 1,001.7. I've, I've been here over 30 years, and it's been a, a location of flooding since before that. So this is a longstanding problem that by having the resources for the stormwater utility, we're finally able to take a look at and identify opportunities, what we can do to see if there's a way to make things better. The report dusted off some work that was done in the year 2000, and we looked at the drainage system that runs down Randolph Street using modern flow modeling methods. We were, particularly the Rock of Ages Church provided us some video and pictures of flood events at their building. And we included that, one fairly dramatic picture in the, in the actual report. At the end of the day, what we've, what we have is an examination of what we can do to make things better. And it's, it's difficult in that the primary drainage structure is a stone arch structure that originates essentially, you've got 10th Avenue in Randolph and then runs west to pass the church at, at, at Rock of Ages Church, and then it goes back to an open channel flow. And over the years, other systems have been connected into that. It's suffered some repairs. And the parking lot immediately west of the church was essentially channelized and a smaller pipe was installed in that connects into the system. The system as it exists today functions essentially at a, we would call it two-year storm level. In that if it, rainfall that you would expect to see of an intensity every other year, and there's some pretty good arguments that we're getting more of those every year.
Absolutely.
Our data isn't quite long enough. I couldn't convince the engineers to go with a higher rainfall, but we did study that. In general, it works in a rainfall event that's every other year or every two years. But it is not, it will overtop and flood the parking lot and impact the church building sometime before you have a five-year event. Being as the church sits at the low end of, essentially acts as a barrier, they're going to catch the brunt of any overflow. We did study the system. I know the report says that we should TV the system, the main stone arch system. Our staff did physically inspect that and found it to be surprisingly better condition than we thought it was going to be. I'd say overall condition is fair. There are some areas that have been repaired in the past, need to be revisited, and some other areas that probably, if we undertake a project there, we would include some repairs there. But we have inspected, we have inspected the system. We looked at some options, which is kind of at the bottom of the policy report, which was, there was a repair that was undersized that was constructed in the arch probably 30 years or longer ago. I don't have a recollection of when it happened, but I knew it was there. That is, the repair was smaller than the arch actually is. We looked at removing, what happens if you remove the existing corrugated pipe that's the church that's constructed in the parking lot? There's some additional flows that come into this system from north of Randolph Street. What happens if you move those flows directly across 10th Avenue and put them into, into Three Mile Creek and not go through the stone arch? And there was the opportunity for a small detention basin. What is the impact of that? Interesting thing to us was these are not, this is not really an opportunity to pick one, or this one, or that one, or the other one. They're all related together in some manner. So you'd need to see where you want to go with this before you decide what options are most effective or cost-effective. The report is here and it identifies that. It kind of, it's a little wordier than I would like in a report, but I didn't write it, so.
No kidding.
Thank you. And no, the representatives of Rock of Ages Church are here this evening, and they may have questions that you're interested in. Staff, I believe it's based on, on this study and the information that's provided, it's an opportune time to discuss the city's expectations of drainage projects with impacted residents, which is primarily, in this particular study, was primarily the Rock of Ages Church, to see if there is, is a way forward that we can bring back to the commission.
Well, it just seems like what, we've been putting bandings kind of on this before by putting other drainage, it's, it's difficult to understand, I'm sorry. But, or what you're looking at now is revamping the whole thing, but I don't understand what you mean by what direction we should, we should go. I mean, what is the most effective answer to that where we can keep from flooding everything?
Well, I think, Mike, let me, I think what Mike's talking about is more globally in direction we should go. A lot of the repair work that cannot, that has to happen before really anything else happens is on private property. It wasn't necessarily done by the current owners of the church, but it doesn't necessarily also affect city infrastructure. We've done some work on private property to protect a city sewer line or something like this. This is a little different. We've done some work as larger drainage systems that affected entire neighborhoods or something like that. But I think the report is pretty clear that there's a 95-foot section of pipe that probably or does, will require removal and replacement, and that entire section is on private property. So what role does the city want to play in those types of fixes where, that's where the primary part of the initial repair would be?
Okay. I'd like to hear from Pastor.
Yeah, is there anybody?
Let me ask Mr. McDonald a question. You mentioned, the report says that needs to be a TV camera to go down, but you also then mentioned you actually walked it.
No, my staff did.
Yeah, well, that's right, yeah. So there, that kind of negates, I'd rather have someone walking it than a TV camera. You kind of probably get a better view. So that, that requirement has been taken care of whether the TV or walk, okay?
If we move forward with the design, we would have it TVed, so we'd have a better record. We believe we TV'd this several years ago. Part of the problem was trying to find that record. We were never, never able to find it. So I finally said, we're going to wrap this up, we're going to take a look at this.
And the latest FEMA maps that we have for the city, is this in a floodplain?
No.
Are there any other comments or questions for Mr. McDonald? For Mr. McDonald? If there are people here, and I think there are some people here from Rock of Ages, you could come up if you have any comments or input to the commission. Hello, Chaplain?
Hi.
Anybody wish to come up, talk for about two or three minutes?
Yeah.
Be happy to hear you. Would you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, Chaplain Gary Teasant for 620 Muncie Road, Leavenworth, 66048.
Good to go, sir.
So we bought that church in 2001, year after I got out of the army. And I've been through four massive floods over there. I mean, where it was up above the windows, the whole block over there, and the houses were all flooded. And so for the last 15 years, we've been trying to figure out what to do. Of course, we got the expert over here, the engineers, but it's, the insurance over there is just, you know, really expensive. But you never know. This summer, we almost had another big flood. If it would have rained for another half hour, we had another big flood. And Dave Jaster over there, and our chairman over there, Bruce, he took pictures of it. I mean, it was just close to going over again.
Oh, sorry.
And so we would, you'd have to dig up the road. Is that what we'd have to do?
There were three alternatives, which I think are pretty well laid out, but I think you've just had like maybe a week to look at this study. I, I don't think you and any of the leaders from the Rock of the Ages Church has had a chance really to discuss this in any detail, have you?
No, no, sir. We've provided them a copy of that, and this is, we have not discussed it further.
Yeah. I, I'm sorry, Chaplain, I'll, I would think that our staff, you know, led by Mr. McDonald, would have discussions going forward in the very near future with the church to see what alternatives, options could be, could be brought back to the commission for us to consider. And with the understanding that some of the, some of the special, unique characteristics of this particular project that Mr. Kramer pointed out. But we, I know as one commissioner, I have got an open mind, and I thought it was a good report, pretty thorough, in that there were three alternatives, but maybe some of those could be mixed and matched going forward. But I just think that maybe the next step is just for the city and the leaders from the Rock of the Ages Church to get together and, and do a little bit more work, and then come back to the commission sometime in the not-too-distant future.
I just have, have a question too. Was it flooding the whole block? Did you say it was flooding the whole block?
It starts, it starts at the parking lot, and goes east over to 10th Street. Runs across 10th Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a whole half a block.
Do those houses get flooded too?
The houses on the north side of Randolph have been flooded. Much of that was due to?
On the north side?
On the, on the north side of Randolph. Porches of, the ones on the south side may have been flooded also, but the ones on the north side, part of a separate drainage system that ties into this arch, that was partially blocked at the time, I believe, or something. It's, it has been a problem, but it is not directly related to the problem related to this church.
How old is the parking lot? Or has that been expanded at all in the last 20 years? Do you know, Chaplain? Or Mr. McDonald, either of you?
Parking lot for the, I got here in 94. I was a close chaplain for three years, and I went to Korea. When I got here, the year before was a 93 flood.
Right.
That was huge. And I understand that parking lot used to cover where the creek is, and that just blew up like a geyser. Just exploded. The neighbors there standing there just watching. It was all parking lot, and all of a sudden, kaboom.
Yeah, so it's, it's been a problem for a while. That's, that's obvious, and it's, it's evident in the, in the report. But Commissioner Leonhardt, any comments or Commissioner Wilson?
Well, I guess the only question that I had was, was there a specific timeframe that the city had planned on meeting with, with the leaders of the church?
Yeah, we, so we did give them the study just a week before this, and we have gotten a little bit of correspondence back from Dave Davis, who's I know is a member of the church and is an engineer. So he just sent us some initial comments, but I, we'd be willing to, and interested in sitting down pretty soon.
As quickly as we reasonably can to make sure we fully understand what we're each other's talking about in this.
Sure.
In the study, so.
So that's what I propose, that's what the commissioners proposed, and is that acceptable to you, Chaplain Sanford?
That's good. If we could just keep on this thing, because, you know, we get some help over there, that would, that'd really be great. Any other comments from Bruce or Dave?
You done, Sam?
Yeah. Okay, this is Dave Jaster, he's been, he's been our honcho on this thing, so come on up here.
Dave Jaster, and what's your address, Dave? Where do you live?
J A S T E R. My address is 1932 Dakota Street, Leavenworth, Kansas, 66048.
Good.
I'm the one that headed this up because a church board asked me to.
Sure.
I wasn't on the board at the time. About 11 or 12 months ago, I am on the board now.
Good.
I had a couple of questions just from listening to what's going on right now. You mentioned 90 or 95 feet of private property they're looking at to do repairs on, considering the drainage problem. Is that church property or some other properties?
Church property.
Church property. Okay. And then, my other comment is that I don't know how thoroughly they've checked the drainage system. Right under the church parking lot or even under Randolph Street going past 10th Avenue, I think it needs to be thoroughly checked to see if that's part of the flooding problem, because there are bends in the system right past the church property, and there could be clogging going on, because we've had to remove a little bit of clogage in our little section of property under the, in the drainage. And there could be some breakdown in part of the system too. I don't know. But I think before they do anything, it should be thoroughly inspected there.
I would think that would be a subject of one of the discussion in one of these first meetings that the city staff has with, with you as a leader of the church and other, other leaders that you so designate. Definitely. And I, there was a lot of good work done by Black and Beach, but they indicated there were some limitations. But Mr. McDonald knows, I think, what we've done as far as the city staff and what may remain to be done in terms of further checking out certain things, I would think.
Thank you. And we do have the report, but I'm not an engineer.
Sure.
So it didn't make much sense to me, but I could understand a little of it.
Sure.
But it's beyond me, but.
Has Mr. Davis had a, Dave?
Yes.
Has he had a chance to look at it?
He's got a copy.
Okay.
Yeah, and he's helping us out a lot.
All right, well, I think we're gonna, we are.
And he's written us an email about it, too.
Yeah, we're going to move forward in the, in the manner that I just described. And are there any other questions or comments?
No. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bruce Simpson. I'm the chairman of the board for Rock of Ages. One issue that I'd like to, like to be provided when we have our meetings is what kind of grants are available to help church finance for this? In fact, we've got to just work on that, stretch in the parking lot, because our funds are very limited.
Sure.
We need possibly, we need to know what grants are available for us to apply for in order to help us.
Okay.
Yeah, it is.
There are no city grants. I don't know if you're talking to like a federal grant or something like that. We wouldn't be, we could talk to a FEMA floodplain administrator or something along those lines, but as far as city, there would just be a city stormwater funds.
If it's not in the floodplain, would that even affect?
Probably not.
We, we could check with FEMA. The likelihood is probably not, but we can check, and the city manager has clarified that we don't have a city grant per se, but we certainly could check with some of the federal agencies, beginning with FEMA.
We have written FEMA, and it's been nine months, and we still haven't received an answer. So, I mean, that's solid. And I know FEMA's been involved in a lot of other things other than floodwaters and that.
Would that be something maybe one of our representatives could, could help with? Or just in terms of a response?
Yeah, our representatives or their representatives. But we also have maybe a contact at FEMA we could check on.
So that's an item I'd like for us to discuss thoroughly.
Sure.
When we have our series of meetings.
Yeah, I, I, I think so. Yeah, I'm not sure that that's the first topic on the agenda for the first meeting, but it'll, it'll be discussed.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Simpson, it's brought up here. I know that you contacted FEMA nine months ago, and you still haven't heard anything. I advise any citizen at any time they're talking with a federal agency, if they're not hearing any results in a timely fashion, be it the VA, be it FEMA. That's what your representatives in Washington, the Senate, or the House, they love jumping on those things. They love it, and they get a call from you, their, their people get into action, and quite often your phone rings within 36 hours or something. So.
Good, okay. That's good.
Thank you.
They've got a whole group of young staffers that follow up on things like that.
Especially during election year. That's right.
Even more.
Good time of year.
We wrote the letter, and we had some stuff going on down south, you know? I mean, I don't understand.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so are there any other comments or discussion? Mr. McDonald, anything else?
I have nothing, sir.
Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Good presentation. We're going to go to the third topic for today's study session, and it's review adoption of 2018 International Fire Code. And Chief Birch, gonna take us through this?
There you go. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to talk. Just a little background, we started looking into the adoption of 2018 Fire Code along with the Building Code and stuff. We thought it would be a good time to kind of look at the burn, the burn portion of open burning. It's somewhat independent of the codes, each jurisdiction. What the code specifies is that when you do have a recreational fire or a prescribed fire or something like that, it tells like the size, you know, three foot diameter, two foot high and things of that. It gives specifics like that. It talks about not being able to burn leaves or anything, producing smoke and things of that nature. Outside of that, it's somewhat left to the jurisdiction. Currently, currently today, what we had in place was that we had permit and non-permit. The permit basically said that people could burn brush, tree debris, not leaves, but tree branches and stuff. And it was permitted. They'd have to call, we'd go out and look, make sure it's 50 feet from the structure, no bigger than six foot in diameter, not under fire lines or close to any other combustibles, things of that nature. It had to be, you know, have some type of extinguishing source, could be a bucket of water, sand, hose, something of that nature. They had to be in control of the property. So it speaks to that. The other thing was on the, now a barbecue grill, something of that nature is fine, cooking, anything for cooking. Other than that, it is mentioned in the codes though that you can't have it in more than like an apartment building. You can't have it on the balcony and things of that nature, with the exception if it's sprinkled or something like that. So we had the permit with the brush burn and then we have a non-permit currently, which said it leaves it up to each jurisdiction to decide what they consider that. And currently, ours was that you could have a fire pit, you know, for burning, or you could have a barrel. And so people can do that without calling for permit currently. Over the last, you know, last two years, we've had two structure fires directly related. The cost is coming because of the barrel, stuff come out of the barrel and stuff. So that got us thinking about that. And then also we had someone burning a stump close to their structure, which isn't tree branches and stuff. And so it got into a house also. So we got into discussions of that and then looked at some of the other things. Now, you know, so that's where they all began and started looking into it. And then the question is, well, what, why do, if we are allowing people to burn the branches and stuff, then why do we have the barrels? Because you can't burn trash, paper, things of that nature. So that's kind of how we got into it. And what we decided staff that we would basically go with a no-burn policy with some exceptions. The exceptions we have on the wall that is the open pit air destructor, which is permit required. And we currently have that already into city ordinance now. Ceremonial bonfires, permit required. That'd be like six foot diameter and a more four foot high, 50 foot from the structure. And that'd be something that it's organized group, maybe a church group or school or something of that nature. And then prescribed burns is in the code. We didn't currently have it, but that's permit required. That's something where sometimes occasionally somebody may have prairie grass or something of that nature that they want to burn off. And part of the code there says they have to get someone that kind of specializes in that and does that. The other thing is the portable outdoor fireplaces is really popular, but being some, those do, they are expensive. And I have seen people around doing their own little campfires and stuff, larger. But, so I felt like some people may not be able to afford a portable outdoor fireplace. So I thought, well, let's allow a recreational campfire and specify no more than three foot diameter, two foot high, 25 foot from the structure, and those safety things. So that, so that people that maybe don't, can't afford to have one of those little chimneys can also, you know, cook hot dogs or roach marshmallows or something like that. I know my grandkids enjoy doing that. So that's where we come up with the exceptions at.
And the last two would not require a permit?
No.
Recreational campfires and the portable outdoor fireplaces would not require a permit?
No. And just kind of like we do now with the recreational fire, you know, we'll have on our website and we have a thing kind of specifying safety precautions and stuff to follow. Of course, with anything, any of these, if any time that there was producing a lot of smoke or causing a nuisance, then we'd go and if there's, you know, we can't get that under control, then we would go ahead and put it out on that, on a nuisance. And we have had those calls before. So that's what we come up with. Well, after we presented this and there's been quite a bit of discussion, talked to a lot of citizens and stuff. And the other thing too, they talked about the burning of brush, a brush pot. And then, you know, and like I've mentioned before, in Leavenworth, we provide a lot of services here that's not afforded to other people in other communities. If you bundle your brush up, our refuse department will pick it up. We have a brush dump over here that's open several days a week. I think they're limited during the winter, I was looking on there. But a pickup, there's a small fee for like a pickup load. There's certain days a week that it's actually freed our residents. So you have the brush dump here locally and then you have a refuse department that will actually pick it up if you bundle it. So with that and then the fires, that's why I thought, I just don't see a need in doing that. But talking to a few people and then we surveyed some other communities, there was a couple that, they said, well, yes, I guess we could burn in a barrel, but they really don't have this or that issue. Couple of the cities we talked to also, they charge, if you want to burn outside of the recreational fire, the fire pit there, they charge a fee, you know, $10 fee, $25 fee to burn brush. Couple of cities, Shawnee, Lenoxa. Overland Park, no on the barrels. Leewood, no. Mission, Mission Hills, Westwood, Airway said no. The ones that said yes was without a fee, was Edwardsville and Marion. Oleatha said no. They don't do the barrels because what they find using barrels when people, even on the construction site, they'll have some type of a trash paper of nature, which means when they show up. And barrels kind of lend itself to that, throwing some other items in there. And then I, you know, even with that being said, then even today, another thing, because some people I was told that like to burn possibly papers with social securities or account numbers or things of that, so that's why they like to burn. But talking to the staff this morning, we even hear at springtime that you can bring stuff and even have a shredder here in this community too, which is not, not, it's not available to other people. We can buy a shredder. So it just, it just, my feeling that it's the fire chief here in the business, that I just don't see the purpose of a barrel. It's 55 gallon barrel, it's tall, you gotta put a lot of stuff in it. It tends to start smoldering, smoking. And I think people do have a tendency to walk away from it because it's not open flame. And then tendency maybe to throw stuff in there, probably shouldn't be throwing in there. So that's my recommendation. KC Kansas, when I communicated with them, they allow the burning of brush, not in a barrel, but burning of brush. They do it a couple of times a year, springtime and fall time. So I thought, well, that would be a good compromise and, you know, the dates could be adjusted. But spring cleanups, fall cleanup. If you wait too late in the fall, then I think, and then you maybe start talking leaves and stuff. People have tendency to start throwing leaves, which is going to smoke. But the time for the KCK uses was April and then September 15th to October 15th. And so I thought, well, you know, that would be fine here, you know, because some people may not want to go to the brush dump or use those other things, but that would be a compromise, so.
For the barrels?
No, for open burning.
Open burning, which doesn't seem to me any safer than being in a barrel. I don't know. I still think that we ought to allow an exception for maybe even just the ones that are there and not allow any new ones, you know, grandfathered in or something. But I don't see any reason to not allow with a permit, a barrel, burning in a barrel with a permit. I mean, you've been allowing it without a permit, right? In previously?
This city has been allowing it for a number of years.
I mean, the city has.
I wouldn't say I.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The city has been. And that's even without a permit, right?
Correct.
But I know some people have been calling you before they burn, or it's my understanding from what they tell me. But I don't see any reason not to just include that in there with a permit, that they'd have to get a permit before they could burn.
So if they get a permit, that means you'd have to go out and inspect?
But if you already know, you know, how it's set up, it's set far enough from the house. I mean, they gotta inspect it to see if it's not underneath the, the eave of the house next door, you know, or whatever.
The initial assessment.
Yeah, but if they know who's, you know, who's got burned barrels, I mean, it's not, I just think, I just think it ought to be an exception.
And we did have two structure fires last year.
Right. I know, I know. Do you have two every year? I mean, is this something rare? How many, I mean, how many of you?
I don't know.
Just two, two last year that threw, I mean, that's just clinically insignificant. I mean, that's two, two burns, but I mean, it's...
If we, if we show up and they're burning paper and stuff, that's going to be put out and we'll give them a fine too.
Right.
We haven't done that.
There's a lot of barrels, there's a lot of, I went around with some of the, one of the code enforcers the other day just for, and we went down a lot of alleyways and stuff. And there was a lot of barrels down alleyways that I didn't even know.
Yeah.
In wooded areas.
I think there's a lot more than what you realize.
Yeah, I was surprised.
So do they burn in those barrels that's in the alleyway?
Well, I mean, it wasn't at the time when I drove by, but yeah, it looked like things had been burned and I don't know what. I didn't get out and look.
And I think that's the concern. Most of those are, well, and there's a lot in very small lots with no trees. So what are people burning in burn barrels? I think that's the argument is they're not burning.
Right. And it's alleyways that you normally wouldn't go down, but I was with a code enforcer, so we were going in different areas, so.
But there were two major incidents that occurred within the past two years? In regards to the burn barrels, all right.
Chief Birch, on the prescribed burns, in the spring and the fall, was there a size limit? Where, I mean, people have to bring their debris, their brush to, you know, a certain size?
Well, the prescribed burn isn't where you bring brush to it necessarily. It's like if you're just going to burn off.
No, I don't. And then I don't, that's not what I mean.
And a lot of, a lot of that even, even currently with, with burning a brush, it's 50 feet from any structure or combustible material. So you take the normal subdivision, you're going to be within 50 feet of a house, your house or another house.
Yeah, the question I'm asking, I guess, I stated it wrong, is burn tree debris during two 30-day periods, one in the spring and one in the fall. And tree debris would be, you know, loose limbs, et cetera. Do they have to put it, is there a certain size they have to?
Yes, sir.
What is that size?
Basically exactly what we're doing now, except limited to two times a year.
What's the size of the burn area? That's what I'm asking.
Six foot in diameter, diameter.
Six by six?
Six, six diameter, if it's round, four foot high.
Four foot high.
That's a pretty good size. That's more than a quart of wood.
50 foot from a structure or combustible material.
That's more, more than a quart of wood. 144 square feet versus, cubic feet versus 128 for quart of wood. So that's a large amount of space to be.
Pretty good size, yes.
Yeah.
Dr. Gillette, are you here to make any comments tonight?
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and come up and we'll take your comments and then we'll continue our discussion here. Yeah, yeah. If we could keep it to two or three minutes, that would be good, but go ahead, sir.
I didn't see that, Chief.
Yeah, I'm going to address all these things that he's had up there to sell you. He's wanting to sell you that, get rid of having a real bonfire and a burn barrel. So I'm going to talk about this. I am Billy Gillette and I will address this new fire code on page five, 307.41 and 307.42. I see that the fire chief follows the United Nations International Fire Code for updating. But here in the Midwest, do not think that this is a good fit on everything. There are a total of 13 pages. There are ceremonial bonfires and recreational fires. Now, those are new to this area and we will all should know, very few people will know about them to try doing. But he's hoping that you'll go to that instead of what we've had for years and still need to have. Several of us here in Leavenworth have been doing bonfires and barrel burning for years and would like to continue. We are not in the eastern seaboard where the United Nations is and use the word ceremonial and recreational fires, which are smaller than a bonfire. I am begging the city commission to put thought about this, to remove both of those and put in their place a burn barrel and a bonfire with a fire permit like it has been for years. Both of these terms are understood by people in the Midwest. And yes, with a bonfire, if some of the neighbors want to come over when it's getting burned down, we can have a winnie roast or a marshmallow roast that you're talking about up here. You can do those on a regular bonfire too. And we'd really like you to put some thought into taking those two out and putting them back to what we've had in the Midwest for a long time and still need to have.
Could I ask you a question, Dr. Gillette? With your, the barrel burning that you do on your property, is it twigs, small branches, leaves?
It's mostly, no, I don't, don't try to burn those in a burn barrel. You could, but I don't. I burn paper.
Okay.
You know, when you're in a place for 40 years or 50 years, like I've been, I don't like to put papers that's got my social security number on it or other numbers, like very old tax reforms. I don't like to put those in trash and don't know who else is going to get to see them and try to take advantage of you. So those are the type of things that we burn in the burn barrel.
Okay, and on the ceremonial bonfires? We were, it was an exception as far as I thought, right? But a permit would be required. That's what's different, right? For a ceremonial bonfire, under the new, under the proposed new policy, a resident would have to get a permit, correct? Is that the?
Well, you have to get a permit for a regular bonfire. We've had to do that for several years. You call up, you call down to the fire station on 20th Street.
Right.
And they send out a person, I think, the guy that was here with the chief the other night. He'll come out and give you a permit.
Sure.
And you can burn your bonfire.
So is that bonfire different than a ceremonial bonfire, the bonfire?
Well, it's quite a little, some of the time it's considerably bigger than that.
Okay.
And you don't have to put stone around it or bricks around it like, like the book says. He's not telling you the whole story up here. He's just telling you what he wants you to buy.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Gillette. I appreciate your input. Any, any other comments or? I like the fact that you've come up with, in terms of burning the twigs, the small branches, the brush, you know, sort of a compromise solution in terms of the two 30-day periods, Chief, for people. I did get, you know, I listened to Dr. Gillette last time. I also got some calls for people who were primarily concerned that they wouldn't be able to burn twigs and small branches and those type of materials. So this would, I mean, this does in terms of these two 30-day periods, although you might want to, we might want to consider expanding those two periods to 45 days, but just to give a little more flexibility to the citizens. But I think that's a positive step forward. I think I will probably contact a few of the people who contacted me and see what they think. We're not making a decision on this tonight, right? But I don't, I don't, but, but, so that's, but I thought that was good, to be thinking outside the box a little bit. For at least those people who are using burn barrels or have a requirement, they think to burn twigs, small branches, wouldn't be for leaves though, right?
No, no leaves or paper.
No leaves or paper, right.
And currently, the, when people call to get a permit for burning, what we currently do is during the day, the fire must be extinguished by 6:00 PM or sunset. Usually you can make a bonfire ceremony in the evening time.
Right.
So there's stipulation. So it can only be done during the day when you're burning brush and stuff.
Right. Any other comments or?
I don't know if I'm clear on, I know we haven't made any decision or any consensus, but what is it on burn barrels? I'm hearing all kinds of things.
Do we need a consensus with that?
Your recommendation is we do away with burn barrels, okay? And have we, are we discussing that or?
I think we are discussing it.
What, what is the discussion been? I've heard, maybe I'm not listening very well.
Well, I think the discussion would be what Dr. Gillette outlined in terms of, I mean, maybe even having, in the past, we haven't had to have a permit, but he probably wouldn't, I don't think he would care if he had a permit. But he wants the, the ability to use a burn barrel to burn basically any type of material, right? Paper or twigs or, but he normally using it for paper, so.
That's in violation, right?
Right.
That's not, the purpose of a burn barrel would be for twigs.
For twigs.
Yeah.
I do think you need to get to the purpose of the burn barrel in the past and the fact that we...
Get rid of the burn barrel or?
Does any city, anybody allow burning of papers now in a city?
No.
All this burning, basically what we're talking about is wood, not wood, but tree debris and not leaves. Not talking papers, plastic, they're household trash. But that's, the argument there, Dr. Gillette usually likes, burn this paper. Well, that's, that's not, you know, I understand that he does that, but that's not an acceptable.
Warming barrels at construction sites are not allowed here currently. And talking to the previous fire marshals, because usually you end up with construction material in those barrels.
Thrown in there, right.
And I can understand Dr. Gillette's concern about, you know, a social security number, tax returns. But I also know there are enough... number or tax returns, but I also know there are enough, there's other alternative methods to destroy that so that other people aren't getting at them rather than a burn barrel.
Right.
And we are, I mean, we're offering that shredded capability at no cost when we have our springtime cleanup, right? I think that's already been advertised.
Financial institutions do that, yeah, too.
Commissioner Wilson, what else? Do you have anything else on this?
Well, just to to address to the to the commission that I did receive complaints from some citizens and they felt as if if we eliminate the burn barrels, they feel as if they'll be the ones being punished because they actually use the burn barrels specifically for twigs.
For what?
That's twigs.
Yeah, no, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, and so I see both sides too, and I see exactly what you're trying to prevent, you know. I'm not opposed, you know, to eliminating burn barrels.
If there were, if there were burn barrels, let's say, if we, we've never, the policy's been moved up to this point, there has been no policy, right, on burn barrels?
Just been allowed.
It's just, there's been nothing stated pro or con.
And there's screen covers.
But if we do state that there are burn barrels, we have to say, can't be within X number of feet of any structure or something like that, then I would suspect, whatever that distance might be, whether it be fifty feet or whatever the fire chief would be, I would suspect ninety percent of the ones, and I'm making a rough guess, ninety percent of the ones in town are illegal. I'm just guessing that, I don't know that. But by, for us saying, yes, it can be burn barrels, but let's put some constraints about it, we're going to eliminate it anyway, I think.
That's why I say with permit. I think it should be an exception with permit.
Well, but the, but still it's going to have to be, you know, X number of feet from a structure, even with a permit.
Yeah, currently it's twenty-five feet from a structure.
Twenty-five feet, even, I mean, you get a, in some parts of town or in some subdivisions, it's pretty tough to just be twenty-five feet from your house without, you know, blowing smoke near neighbor's house or something like that, that people aren't going to like. You you need some property to burn.
The risk is, you know, like, the distance, no burning construction waste or other materials, household rubbish or other material that upon combustion may produce toxic smoke. Fires shall be constantly attended by a competent person and shall be completely extinguished before being left alone and should not cause or create smoke. Extinguishing agent must be readily available. And that's another thing that we discussed with staff, is when people put things in a barrel, we're more apt to walk away from it.
Because they think it's contained, yes.
And there have been two structure fires within the last year or year and a half that have been caused by the, so it's a, it's a safety concern and I would say that that's the major reason that you've brought the the recommendation that you have to the, to the attention of the commission. I I'm not ready to reach a consensus on one way or the other, but I do think when we come back, it'll, you know, one of the options we'll have, one of the issues we'll have to take a look at is continue with burn barrels with a permit or no burn barrels. I mean, so that will have.
But I do like that compromise up there, for sure.
So I think that's where we are and I think the commission commissioners have made some good comments tonight. Any other further comments? Go ahead.
I would like to move forward with the twenty eighteen codes, because we'd like to do that building all together and this can somewhat stand alone.
Yeah, that's our, our local policy.
I'm okay with that.
Can I ask, without going into a lot of detail, the major changes from two thousand and six to two thousand and eighteen in the other areas as far as the international code, what are the ma- major, just, I mean?
Looked at all those.
He did that, they did that the last time.
Yeah, they called that the last time.
About three ago.
Two, two, two times ago, so.
Well, a lot of it was wording and stuff and like it overlaps a lot with the building code and the rest of the code, the sprinklers and things of that nature and people, we in the, we eliminated, omitted chapter eleven, which means everything comes up to today's code right now. We eliminated that except for smoke detectors and CO detectors. They didn't have to be hardwired, but if people do a, like a major renovation in in one of the codes that overlaps a certain percentage, then you'd have to bring it up to code, you know, if you went and cleared out those stuff and stuff. As far as burning that, right now, today's, people can do the lanterns, flying lanterns, that's eliminated in the new code, you can't do those. So that's one of the things.
And most of the surrounding communities in the Kansas City metro area, have they already adopted the two thousand and eighteen?
Yes, a lot of them have, we we work with the, the heart of American Fire Chiefs in the metro area, the Mark region.
Okay.
So one more comment, I guess, Dr. Gillette, if you can hear me, Dr. Gillette, there, I can see you now. We're obviously talking about burn barrels, where it goes, I don't know, but wherever it goes, it does sound like to me as if there ain't no paper in the burn barrels and you're telling me that's why you use that, so.
What's the problem with burning paper?
Come on up to the mic. Yeah, be on the mic, so you're, yeah, so you can.
Come back up to the mic, please.
Yeah, what's the problem with burning paper in a barrel? With a, with a lid over the top of it?
I'm I'm not one that knows how to answer that, maybe you do, Mr. Mayor.
I I would just say that there's always the possibility of little, you know, embers and things coming through the screen and then causing a fire. Now, I recognize that you live, that you.
But it's a lead.
Right, it is, it is.
He's doing pretty good. He's tapping it pretty well.
I'm just trying to take Mr. Gillette's position on this, which I.
Well, I've got two point seven eight acres.
Exactly, that's what I was going with that. Right, right, I know, but it could be more, would be more problematic if that's going on in our alleyways, you know, in some of our downtown businesses, but.
I guess my thought on it would be, you know, I can understand a burn barrel for twigs and tree debris, branches, et cetera, but for paper, when there are other readily available resources to get rid of paper even with confidential information.
That's a good point.
That, I don't think burning is appropriate.
Start your campfire with.
Yeah. You know, a shredder costs, there are shredding places in town that do it free. I know the city cleanup at least once a year, but there's other places, the banks and stuff will do it for you for free. And, you know, a shredder costs thirty-nine dollars too, if you own it in your house. So there are alternatives to burning, which are probably better than than burning household trash, papers.
Well, I'd like to see this up here, what I'm seeing up here makes a lot of sense.
Okay, good, yeah.
I don't know who wrote this up.
The chief did.
Chief did, that's what I I was saying, that since with your.
Chief has heard me last week talking, didn't he?
Well, he did, he did, he heard, we we heard you and we heard some other citizens that talked to us and and chief talked to some citizens and this was, I was glad that he was able to come back and and
Help out, yeah.
Propose a compromise or a new option.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, and I, and I figure there's going to be a permit to do these.
Yes, I think that was part of it, right? Yes, yes, sir.
Like it has been in the past.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Good.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, sir. Any other questions for Dr. Gillette?
Thank you, Dr. Gillette.
Thank you, Dr. Gillette.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, so currently citizens can still use burn, burn barrels?
Currently.
At this moment.
To burn.
At this moment, they can.
Offer materials without a permit.
It is against the law.
And no paper.
Burning paper. Is it paper and garbage or just?
It's any household.
Yeah.
Construction material.
Yeah, so what's, so we're, but we're going to take a look at this in the nigh-to-distant future, this will be brought back to the
Yeah.
Commission, correct, Mr. Kramer?
Yeah, I mean, I would ask the commission, how long would you like?
Sooner or later.
Yeah.
Let me think, next week? I mean, it's going to be at a meeting, right? Well, either, maybe in three weeks or.
Why not next week? I mean, we've talked about it for a month and a half.
Is there any other additional information the commission wants, or are you just intending to hear back and speak to the constituents you've already spoken to? Is there any other additional information you'd like between now and the next time?
I'm going to.
Can we have a consensus to move forward with the rest of it?
With the code part, yes.
Oh, the rest, right.
Please, that'd be great. Is there a consensus to move forward with the
The rest of it.
The rest of the, what, the two thousand and eighteen international fire code plus these?
Building codes.
Building codes, yeah.
And then we bring the local burn policy back.
Is there a consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a consensus to do that. Good, good catch.
See you next week, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gillette, good evening, sir. Okay, so we're going to go back here.
This meeting's getting better and better.
So I think that is it for the topics for tonight's study session. I'm going to start with Mr. Kramer and ask him if he's anything for the good of the order here.
I think everybody's seen the weather coming in, just, this is a tough one, they're all tough ones when you go between snow and ice and rain. What does the city do, what are, what are we going to do for our residents? We're watching it, we have a crew in overnight and if we need to, we can pre-treat, put